Thank you for coming to the Larkspur City Council meeting. It is November the 6th, excuse me for my, it is 6:30. And Allison, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Webb?
Here.
Councilmember Milmar?
Here.
Wes Manchus?
Here.
Mayor Morrison?
Here. So pleased to be here. If you're able to, please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Before I go on to the public comment, I just want to make a comment myself. I want to thank the first responders that worked so hard last week with the Kinkade fires. To our firefighters, I so admired and to watch what was going on on that TV and how many lives you saved and how many homes. It was just amazing to watch. So, thank you, thank you, thank you so very much. And for our police force for protecting our cities and being available whenever it is needed, along with our EMTs. So, wow, I think we all can stand up and just give you a clap and cannot thank you enough. And with that said, there is a bond, a very important bond, coming up in March, and it is called the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority. It is, I'm just going to give you a couple of responsibilities with that bond. It's going to be an early alert and evacuation safety prevention, they're going to work on that, along with hazard reduction and vegetation management. Please look up that website. The bond is going to happen soon, really get to know what it's all about, and I hope we get your yes vote on that. It's an important bond to pass to keep Marin safe. Okay, with that, I will now say, public comment. Anybody in the public would like to make a comment that's not on the agenda tonight? We'd love to listen to you. Come on up. Hi.
Thank you so much. Hello. My name is Eva Guy and I live in Iskaya Village in Larkspur. And I've had two bad accidents in the corner of Skylark Drive and Magnolia Avenue, really bad. And I'm here to ask if we can get a traffic light at the four-stop sign, because a lot of people are not stopping at the stop sign. They cruise right through. I walk every day with my dog and I also been, almost run over. I got a lot of people, I live in Skylark Apartments up the street, and they've had the same problem. So, I came up here to City Hall the other day and filled an application. They said, "Come here and plead your case." And I'm here begging and asking you to put a traffic light there.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm sorry about your accidents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Jennings. Come on in, Redwood students or students. Come on in, have a seat. There's lots of chairs.
Hi, it's Joe Jennings from 208 Montavista, here for the Larkspur Library Community Center Foundation. We wanted to thank the city for getting the Architecture RFP out. We expect to soon have a Developer RFQ from the city. And also, we're getting good response from our meetings with community groups. And we really do appreciate the support we've gotten from the City Council in the effort to build a new library and fund it at Rose Lane. So, thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Joe. So, I see students, we're in public, oh, we have one more? Come on up, please.
Hi, my name's Alana Schroeder. I live on West Baltimore Avenue. I actually am here for another reason, but I thought I'd just bring up the state and the condition of our road, West Baltimore. When was the last time anybody here has been on West Baltimore recently?
It's a busy one, yes.
Yeah, it's kind of a mess from the standpoint of all the recent construction that's been going on there. There's some pretty substantial cracks in the road, I mean, extremely sizable, just walking there a few weeks ago, basically almost sprained my ankle. I know it's on the agenda to get replaced and repaired in 2022, but I do think it's a liability from the standpoint of the city and just because of the state that it's in. It's probably, I'm guessing, the worst road in Larkspur. My neighbor told me it hasn't been addressed in 43 years. I mean, with the amount of taxes, houses between $1.2 and $4 million there, I've been to third world countries with better roads. So, I'm just wondering what the possibility is of getting that pushed up maybe to this summer.
Yeah. So, we don't make comments for public, but we'd be happy, the Public Works Director is here. If you can go ahead and leave your name with Allison, we can get back to you on that.
Great. Would it be possible to get that on the agenda for the next meeting?
You know, our Public Works Director gives an update often on the streets, so we can maybe work on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because the community is very concerned, so they're actually rallying to have a bunch of people here next month, or whenever the next meeting is.
That's great. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Super. And please give your address and the street to Allison.
Okay, great.
Or, I guess we have it, so we don't need it.
Oh, yeah, you have my contact information. Julian's very familiar with me.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joan Dukowski and I live in Marin Park. I'm going to give the full text to Allison, but cut it short, because you've met me before. I wanted to say that it's clear in the last two months of what's happened statewide, regionally, and also locally in our city, that there is, our government really is working to prevent skyrocketing rent increases before they happen by capping annual maximums and also to subsidize the creation of more affordable housing units. And yet, none of these measures include mobile homes. And I'm really hoping that we can begin to focus on that and keep it in the loop. I do believe that mobile homes, especially here in Marin, are the greatest source of affordable housing that is not subsidized in any way by the government. So, by supporting us and protecting us, you will keep us out of your budget. The new statewide rent stabilization cap for rental increases is wonderful, but for those of us who live in mobile homes, I think the scale of it means that it shouldn't be the same, because we're not actually renting a place to live. We're renting a parking place. So, I hope that can be looked at as well. And as you know, just a couple of days ago, the county decided to actually throw $400,000 toward supporting affordable housing. We don't need to be subsidized, we just need to be protected. And, on behalf of Marin Park residents, yay, I really implore the City of Larkspur to designate our neighborhood as affordable housing, and then to do everything you're already doing and more in your power to help us stay that way. Thank you.
Thanks, Joan. Appreciate that. All right, anyone else?
I've been here before too. You probably recognize me. I'm Conrad Williams and I live in Marin Mobile Home Park. And thank you for once again giving us a chance to speak about our cause of having affordable housing. What with the fires and the cutoff of electricity, we've all been tested on survival. Some preparation was made by the firefighters that I hear made evacuations and positioning of firefighting equipment that greatly saved neighborhoods and lives, and for that, we are very grateful. A few businesses had the foresight to keep open by having generators ready to go. I wonder if the city here could have done any better being prepared or is making plans for the next crisis. Could the city also make plans to position generators for the library and encourage important businesses like the downtown gas station and the grocery stores to be ready for the next crisis? We know that the schools could not reopen when the lights came back on, because most of the teachers live in Sonoma County. I'm sure that the majority of police and firemen may also live far away. When the schools have a need for extra funding, they often offer senior citizens to be exempt from the new taxes. May I make a suggestion radical for you to consider to help our public workers better to be able to afford housing here? Could Larkspur make a special category for public workers that their owned or rented property be exempt from property taxes, possibly putting the idea on the ballot? I know that would be a radical move for the city, but perhaps that might help public workers to better afford to live here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, I see some young, oh, good. I want to know what you guys are all about.
Hi, my name is Cole Lewis.
Yeah, hi, Cole.
My name is Cole Lewis. I live on Madrone Canyon. I actually don't go to Redwood.
You look awfully young.
Yeah, I go to the base school of San Francisco.
Okay.
I'm here tonight making a public comment about the city of Larkspur's laws regarding the possession of weapons and, more specifically, the safe storage of firearms. There are 265 million civilian guns in the United States. It's estimated to be about one-third of homes having at least one gun. An estimated 54% of owners do not lock their guns. Many people feel secure in firearms uses in preventing home invasions. This is a problem because of the risk of unintentional injury to children. 4.6 million children live in homes with a gun unlocked and loaded. 350 kids unintentionally shoot themselves or others every year. This is happening right here in the Bay Area. In 2018, a boy climbed a cabinet and unintentionally shot himself with a semi-automatic weapon. Already this year, a three-year-old in San Jose accidentally shot himself in the face while playing with a gun. Another child living in Oakland, seven years old, accidentally shot himself with a gun in his home. And there are guns in Marin. This is not an issue that goes below us. 46,300 firearms were bought in Marin from 2001 to 2015, according to the California Department of Justice. This is not just in our own homes either. It can be when your child is playing at another child's home and receive a terrible injury playing with a gun. It's scary to have these incidents, accidents happening to us. Fortunately, this can be prevented. There's an 85% lower risk of unintentional injury for children when firearms and ammunition are locked away rather than not locked. Be smart, an organization dedicated to safe storage of firearms has a simple method, being unloading firearms of their ammunition, locking the firearms, and storing the weapons away from their ammunition. It's a simple and easy process that can be executed. The City of Larkspur Municipal Code currently states nothing about the storage or possession of firearms. Currently, Chapter 9.28, the section regarding firearms, Section A, reads, "It is unlawful for any person in the city to use or discharge any rifle, gun, pistol, revolver, air rifle, BB gun, or other instrument from or by which means of which any bullet, shot, or other missile of any kind may be projected." The chapter goes on to explain a permit process to fire and use guns. Nothing in the Firearms Control Chapter outlines guidelines for the possession or safe storage of weapons. Such legislation is needed. It keeps the children of our community safe, and you can do something about it to make sure such horrible things don't happen in our community. The City of Encinitas, Burlingame, North San Diego, Culver City, and Sunnyvale have already enacted such legislation regarding safe storage. Cities of Walnut Creek, San Ramon, San Jose, San Mateo, and San Bruno, Brisbane, and Santa Monica are currently working on enacting legislation. I encourage the council to look into enacting an ordinance requiring the safe storage of weapons. Thank you.
Great. Cole, thanks for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming. And I see some young faces out there. Are you from Redwood? And what do you guys, someone come up and tell us what you're doing here? We love having students here. We get excited. Come on. Just one person. Is it a class?
We are...
Come on, say hi. You look like a leader.
Oh.
Got to say your name and where do you live.
My name's Adam Zalesi. I live in Mill Valley. I go to Redwood, though.
Great.
We take a class called American Government, and we were assigned to come in here and listen.
I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, so, we're supposed to take notes and kind of just learn how City Council works and...
Great. And hopefully, one of you guys, or all of you guys, will get into politics and maybe be up here on the dais someday, huh?
Hopefully.
Be a mayor. What do you think?
Exactly. That would be cool.
Thanks for coming up and sharing. Appreciate it. All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead. Any more, anybody else? I see none, so I'll close the public comments, and we'll move on. There is no presentations tonight. Approval of the Consent Calendar. Anybody from the council want to approve, take anything off the consent calendar? I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody from the public want to remove anything from the consent calendar? I see none. So, can I have a motion to approve the...
I move to approval of the Consent Calendar.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Anyone oppose? I see none. Great, it passes. Thank you. All right, City Managers' Report. Dan Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Several announcements for you tonight. First, want to highlight two events. One is coming up this Saturday, the Friends of the Library, here in this room actually, will be doing their second annual appraisal event. You can bring in two items, and for a contribution to the Friends of the Library, you can have those items appraised by a professional. The hours are 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM for the regular entry. There is an early bird with a little bit higher entry fee from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM for those who are so inclined. Secondly, maybe not quite as exciting, but certainly very exciting is staff. We are having our second workshop about the South Aliso Multimodal Improvement Study. This is a look at South Aliso corridor and improvements that are contemplated in a plan for that area. We're doing an open-house style meeting on November 12th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Central Marin Police Authority Community Room. There's information on our website about that meeting. I'd like to stick with Public Works and congratulate our Public Works Director and his staff. They put together grant applications that were submitted to Transportation Authority of Marin that were approved. We're very excited about that. A $400,000 grant for improvements on Doerty Drive for protected bike lanes around Redwood High School. So, that's something we've been pursuing for quite a while. And then, secondly, on South Aliso, as we were just discussing, we've received two smaller grants. Each, one of these grants is $50,000, one's for crosswalk improvements and the other's for intersection improvements. So, congratulations to them, effort well done. And then, our library has launched its Food for Fines campaign yet again. This is an annual campaign where you can bring in non-perishable items to help us restock our local food bank. And if you have any fines, they will be waived in exchange for your donation. And if you don't have any fines, we'll still take your donation. Lastly, want to give a special thanks to Chief Mike Norton, who's President from the Central Police Authority. He graciously worked with us while his officers were busy coping with public safety during the recent power shut-off by PG&E. He worked with us to allow the community room to be a charging room and a place to go to be in the lights here in Larkspur.
It was busy.
So, we appreciate that. It was very busy, and we're in the process now of figuring out how we'll make that even better and greater success. Unfortunate, next time that we'll probably have to offer that service. And then, lastly, just a reminder for the public, we, our next official meeting is December 4th. That'll be a regular business meeting. And then, on December 11th, we'll be having a special meeting, which will be a ceremony for saying goodbye to the Vice Mayor and swearing in our two new council members.
Exciting. Great, thanks. Thanks, Dan. Great news. All right, bring it back to the council members. Any from the council members want to make any comments?
I have some.
Okay, please do.
So, I was not at last month's council meeting, because I was attending the annual conference and expo for the League of California Cities. The League of California Cities is sort of the representative lobbying group and education group for all of the 491 cities and towns in California, and they held an annual conference. And so, I went to that conference. And I haven't had a chance to sort of tell other council members the seminars I attended, but along with sort of the informal ways in which you can meet vendors and you can also meet with other council members, there are a lot of different conference materials and seminars to attend. So, I went to the ones, "To Effective Short-Term Rental Regulations: Reimagining Modern Policing in California," which I found very interesting to hear how other police departments within California function in a much different way than ours does. "Where Transportation Technology and Funding Meet the Road," mostly about autonomous-oriented development, and I think Cindy would have appreciated it, because it was really about how cities have to project for autonomous vehicles and looking at not just transportation in its traditional sense, which was great. I went to the one about the Santa Rosa housing story, how they reconfigured their permitting process after so many homes burned down in Santa Rosa, and really looked at how they could streamline processing. Another one about preserving community identity. I want about gender partnership and gender equity within city governments and within our employees. And then, lastly, was, they called it the Sixth Council Member, which is social media. And it was really about how social media, and we've experienced this, plays a big role in getting word out for things. So, the next conference is next year in same place, because Sacramento is redoing their conference center. So, I plan to attend that, and I'd be happy to share this with the rest through Allison. Second is, I'm now on the Board of Fire Safe Marin, as you know, and I wanted to make sure everybody knew. The Living with Fire presentation that Todd Lando and Ruben often does will be given in Corder Medera in a couple of weeks. So, if you haven't been able to attend the other ones, this one is at the Corder Medera Library on the 14th of this month, and it's free, and it's a two-hour seminar in which you learn a lot about being prepared for fire. And lastly, I intend in the next year, as this meeting goes on, to bring up some historical things about the passage of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which happened 100 years ago next year. And 100 years ago in August, women, one, not one, they fought for the right to vote, and this whole next year will be really a celebration within the country and within the League of Women Voters, which I'm a member of, to recognize that the passage of the 19th Amendment was a really important part of American history. So, one thing I want to bring back home is that November 1st, 1919, California approved the amendment. And if you all know, because now these high school students are going to have to learn this, that Congress will approve an amendment, and then all the states have to ratify it. And California was one of the first states to ratify it, but it didn't get all the way around to becoming an amendment to the Constitution until next year. So, I'm going to bring up things like that in the year ahead, because I think California was really important in the initial rollout of approval of that amendment. And that just happened November 1st, 100 years ago.
And that is your history lesson. There you go. I think all the council members should go to that conference. It sounds fascinating.
Oh, it's terrific. And I've always enjoyed just the ability to meet council members from all these different-sized cities.
Absolutely.
And city managers, and police chiefs, and fire chiefs, et cetera. Everyone's dealing with many, all of the same issues we're all dealing with, which is housing, which is global climate change, which is affecting California economic development. And we're very, I'm frequently recognized how really well-organized Larkspur is, and how really well-organized Marin County is within the structure of a lot of other disorganized dysfunctional cities in California, so...
Thank you. Anyone else? Dan?
Go ahead, Larry. I just want to make a brief report following today's SMART Train Board of Directors meeting. The SMART extension to Larkspur has completed 100% of the federal rail authority's required testing. Simulated Passenger Service will be starting later this month, which means all the passengers will be dropped off at the San Rafael Downtown Station, and the train will simulate its service to the Larkspur Ferry Terminal area. And that'll, is being done with the goal of opening train service before the end of the year. So, I think that's very exciting, and we'll keep the council posted on opening day service ceremonies. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Dan. Larry?
This wasn't mentioned in the City Managers' Report, but I thought I saw Julian Skinner here earlier.
He's right over there.
Oh, he is. There he is, behind Allison. Anyway, wanted just to actually give them a call out, especially with people here in the audience. And it has to do, as one earlier spoke, person spoke about the condition of our roads, and Metropolitan Transportation Commission just reported out that Larkspur had the best one year improvement of any other 101 cities in the Bay Area.
That's right.
So, congratulations. You know, we're only partway through this implementation, still have two, three, or four more years to go. And the support of the community with Measure C has basically funded that project, and we'll get all our roads either rehabilitated, excuse me, or repaved sometime within that next timeframe. Follow on on the mayor's comment earlier in the evening. You know, a lot of people have asked me what I'm going to be doing after I retire. Actually, be doing, you know, more work, but from the other side of the dais, and since I saw Supervisor Rice here earlier tonight. It's a lot of the same members of the same team that did the measure for the 911 Emergency Radio System back in 2014. We just kicked off the campaign to help fund this wildland fire mitigation and fire prevention measure, and our Form 410 was filed yesterday. So, we are on our way.
That's great. Super. Great. Thanks, Larry. My report's Chamber of Commerce, Larkspur Chamber of Commerce. We have a new Executive Director, Julie Servetto. We have now two new co-presidents, Sam Pavelin and Audrey Shapiro, and two new board members, Joe Jennings and Angela Curley. Joe, thanks for joining. And then, two events are coming up. November the 16th, we have got the North Magnolia Holiday Stroll from Wonderful. Hopefully, you guys can go. And we have the Holiday Mixer at Bonner Center from 5:00 to 7:00, and the date is still pending. Went to a ribbon cutting today at Molly Stone's. There's over 250 people that attended that ribbon cutting. It was very special. The founders of Molly Stone's all were there, and it was just very sweet, and it's incredible store. Just the Bonner Shopping Center itself, the redevelopment, the remodel is just incredible. So, we're very lucky to have this remodeled of Molly Stone's and just have Bonner Shopping Center. So, that was, I was quite privileged to cut that ribbon with all these successful businessmen and women. Also, the Twin Cities Village, Marin Villages, is receiving a resolution from the Marin Board of Supervisors. So, that's really exciting. So, these Twin Cities Village, Marin Villages, they, we congratulated them for 10 years of service of engaging community volunteers to help Marin older adults continue to be active, connected to their community, and to stay independent in the place that they call home. So, 10 years of service is pretty, pretty exciting. It's only continued to grow. So, that's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on now to Public Carrying. 7.1, Approve Amendment to the City of Larkspur's Schedule of User and Regulatory Fees. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We periodically review and update our fee schedule as appropriate, based on our assessment of our conditions here in the city. And to make sure we do that in a way that's compliant with state law, we rely on the help of experts in the field of government and regulatory fees. And in this case, we have Terry Madsen from Clear Source Financial Consulting, and he's going to talk about the amendments we propose for our fee schedule. So, I'm going to turn it over to you, Terry. Thank you.
Hi, Terry.
Yes, should I also navigate the PowerPoint?
Oh, yeah. I think, is that where she may be getting you the remote? Forgot about it. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Members of the City Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening. As the City Manager mentioned, the city maintains a schedule of user and regulatory fees. These are fees that the city charges for services it provides. Typically, we think of these as building permit and plan review services, planning entitlement services, those kind of things, entitlement permits. At a minimum, the city updates its fee schedule typically once a year, but then occasionally, if there's a request for fee modification during the course of the year, this item can come back before you for consideration of individual modifications to fees rather than that comprehensive update that you do once a year. The most recent adjustment to fees was conducted in April of 2019. That was your once-a-year update. Subsequent to that update, two additional fees have been identified as being recommended for council consideration. They are a credit card transaction processing fee and what is commonly known as a technology enhancement fee. So, those are the fees for your consideration this evening. I'll walk through each of those briefly with you. The credit card transaction fee, when municipalities or businesses use, accept credit card payment, there's a there's a vendor that's involved in that transaction, and the vendor typically charges about 3% of whatever amount is paid as the transaction fee. This fee would allow the city to recover that cost that is passed through directly to the vendor from applicants that wish to pay with a credit card. So, if you're an applicant and you desire to pay your fees via check or cash or anything other than a credit card, this fee would not apply to you. It only applies if you like to use a credit card. The reason communities collect this type of fee is because in your world, in permit fees, you can have some really significant fees paid, requests for payment of fees via credit card, and so that 3% can add up quickly. If you're a city that is targeting recovery of your costs, then off the table, you've lost 3%. So, this lets you come to truly full-cost recovery with a pass-through to the vendor of whatever amounts they're owed by agreement. Again, this fee would only apply to those wishing to pay with credit card. The other fee is what's called a technology enhancement fee, and the communities throughout the state are really relying more and more on this type of fee. We do these studies for communities throughout the state, and we're rarely completing a study without consideration of this type of fee today. And that's because of this increased reliance on technology that provides like an enhanced service to particular user groups. So, maybe a reliance on the ability to do electronic plant submittals, or online permitting, or tracking of projects with lots of components and moving parts. These are significant expenditures that the city will incur in terms of permit systems, registration systems, those kind of things. And so, this type of fee is commonly adopted by communities that want to earmark those collections as to be used specifically for that actual outflow of the permit system costs, or any ongoing licensing, consulting for updates of that permit system or registration system. And so, it creates this dedicated resource. It's not intended to be used for normal inspection services, or to offset the costs of police services or staffing. It's intended to be used specifically for enhanced technology that benefits the fee payer. And so, when the fee is collected, there's a unique account code. The money is deposited according to that account code, and then when those types of outflows are anticipated by the city, you can use this resource to offset a portion of those costs. In terms of fiscal impact to the city, as we mentioned, that credit card transaction fee is really like a net zero. It is a true pass-through to the vendor. We anticipate that based on your existing permit fee revenue, the technology enhancement fee would provide in the neighborhood of $40,000 per year, assuming you maintained relatively consistent volume to what you're seeing today. It is applied as a percent of permit fees, so as permit fees adjust, this fee would follow that, but generally, we're assuming roughly $40,000 a year in fiscal impact. As the city manager mentioned, the city cannot impose these fees without approval of the City Council at the conclusion of a public hearing. So, the action being requested of you this evening is to consider adopting these two fees. If they were adopted, they would be included into the comprehensive schedule of user and regulatory fees. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions or comments, I'm available to receive your feedback.
Great. Thanks, Terry. Stay there. Council members, any? Larry?
Yeah, with the first fee, the credit card thing, will the city still have the ability to do electronic transmit, transactions, either direct or debit or something like that, where they don't have to write a check, but still can process online without incurring, or at least minimizing that fee? Because other government agencies only charge a nominal amount for debit.
Like a Venmo kind of thing?
I think the Vice Mayor's asking if we can take debit card charges, which don't typically carry much of a transaction fee with them. We haven't had a lot of requests for that, but we probably will if this fee's imposed, and we can look into adding that to our suite. I think we have that capability, and we just haven't had a lot of interest in using it in the past.
As a, as a follow-up to that, though, I do believe there's a restriction on debit. Debit fees function like a check, so this is exclusive, this fee is intended to be exclusive to credit card transactions rather than debit card transactions.
Yeah, I understand that, but I want to make sure then if we do this, that the public has the opportunity to use a alternate means of electronic payment.
Okay.
Second question on the second item.
Yeah.
Is that 5% a variable cost, or are we offsetting a fixed cost?
You are, the cost, they are, they can fluctuate from year to year depending on what type of licensing agreements you enter into. You have, you're anticipating going out to bid shortly for an enhanced technology suite for permit systems, and depending on how your contract is structured, you may have certain portions of the costs that are fixed and others that are variable.
Okay, so, how do, how do you come up with a formulaic way of dealing with the fixed cost? There are variations in the amount of permits that we get from year to year.
We make estimates. So, what we do is we estimate what you're likely to incur in terms of system implementation costs, and what is the useful life of that system? Because a lot of times, there's a significant upfront cost, but the system may have a useful life of eight to 10 years. And so, we amortize that over a number of years, that cost over a number of years. But we can also anticipate ongoing annual licensing and maintenance expenses. But again, these are ballpark estimates. And so, we have amortized costs over multiple years to come up with an estimated annual cost. And then we look at your historical permit fee revenue, and we say, based on this historical permit fee revenue, if you collected 5% of that permit fee revenue, it would generate $40,000 in costs, or in revenue available to offset those amortized annual costs.
Okay, so, you had mentioned this was being coded to a certain account. Is that a restricted account?
Yeah, so, the fee is intended to be held for the purpose of investing in the technologies that the fee's being charged for. So, the fees would be kept in a separate account so we could track that the expenditures are appropriately tied to the purpose of the fee.
Yeah, so, going back to the question about fixed cost, if you have a year where you don't have a lot of people with permits, that any balance you've accumulated will remain so that in prior years where there was a higher volume, you'd be able to offset the cost of a year when there's a lower volume?
That, in theory, is true. The city recently commissioned a full analysis of its IT situation and its IT systems, and was, we're deficient in a number of areas, and so, our costs over the next several years are going to be in the six-figure amount annually to bring us back to state-of-the-art conditions. The land managed, the land use management system, the permitting system, was identified as one of our greatest vulnerabilities. The sheer process to acquire that software is well in excess of the $40,000 in the first year. I think it would take us 10 years to even come close to recovering as much as we're going to spend. So, I think the question you're asking doesn't become relevant for at least 10 years. But I appreciate what you're asking, and we would want to look at the fee to make sure we weren't collecting more than we needed going forward. But, you know, my experience, technology just keeps advancing and getting more expensive, and our clientele expect us to be responsive to their needs. And that's a big part of our analysis, was we're not being responsive in terms of technology to our users, and we need something like this fee to help us get there.
Okay, so, if this is a cost of doing business and a tool of the trade, why would this be a 5% fee rather than just included in the cost of the permitting?
So, what communities do typically? What we're finding is that you have your normal costs for day-to-day operations, that just baseline-level technology, your normal computer systems, your payroll processing system, all those types of systems are included in your base-level day-to-day costs and your base permit fees. But this is for those enhanced systems, and what you're doing is really, when you treat the earmarking, is the idea that it doesn't get lost and used for another purpose. When we treat it as just this base day-to-day operating costs, then it really can be easily used for whatever purpose the general fund desires. But this idea of identifying a distinct account helps create accountability for that, for use of those revenues. And the development community has supported that, the idea of paying for enhanced technology, but wanting to make sure that when they pay for enhanced technology, they really are getting that technology to serve them.
Great. Makes sense. Anything else, Larry?
Not right now. Thanks.
Okay. Dan?
What are the standards for creating the organization for this? I mean, in your description, I mean, it sounds like it makes sense, but for subsequent members of the organization, for example, is, what are the standards that are intended to be kept so that there's a consistent following of the policy or the practices you're describing?
I don't know if those have been adopted or will be documented, but typically, the idea, what we see in our other communities is that when considering whether it's an appropriate use of those revenues collected, there should be some correlation to the technology that's serving the development community. That can be consulting support, it can be licensing of the permit software, it can be hardware, like larger monitors than your typical personnel might use so that we can see these large plans in high detail, things like that, that we can correlate to serving the community, serving the user-fee population is where it's appropriate to use those funds.
I'm just, it's, it just, the definition is hard for me to get my arms around. It sounds like Christmas.
I'm not sure how to address that comment exactly. I'll offer two comments. First, on accountability, because we'll be holding this money in a special account because it was a dedicated fee, your independent auditor will periodically randomly sample that account to make sure the transactions that are in that account are appropriate, given the purpose of the fee. So, that's your assurance that there's some third-party accountability, that the money's being used appropriately. In terms of tracking its use, I can only tell you that having now spent some time with a firm assessing our needs and learning more about these technological needs and the way they're licensed, if we don't do this, the general fund's going to be subsidizing development costs on the magnitude of $10,000 to $20,000 annually, in my estimation. And that sets aside the upfront investment to get the new system that we need. There's license, there's annual licensing requirements that are several thousands of dollars. There's all the additional costs to work in these software packages as you're taking in different types of data. Part of this is to modernize so we can start to accept more electronic information from folks who are pulling permits than we currently can do. Part of it is to better enhance the ability of our permit system and our finance department to interact and ensure that the money's being accounted for correctly. I feel very comfortable that this amount of money is appropriate for us to cover the cost on an annual basis to provide this level of service.
As usual, we have to trust the, our staff, and we do.
Absolutely.
So, to be clear then, or just to clarify, if someone pulls a $100 permit for some building, they have a 5% technology fee, and if they pay with their credit card, they're now have an 8% additional fee?
Yeah, and I'll tell you the, I don't, I know my counterfolks here. I think once you put the 3% credit card fee in, you're going to see a lot of folks doing $100. They're going to write you a check or do something else. It's when the developer walks in and they'd like to cover a $10,000 fee, that we're taking a substantial hit. The general fund and the taxpayer are paying a 3% subsidy to facilitate that.
To Visa, yeah.
And that just doesn't seem appropriate. Terry didn't point out, but this, this, we couldn't bring this to you until 2019. In 2018, there was a court ruling that changed the dynamics. It used to be prohibited to pass along these fees. I think it's appropriate to pass along again, because I don't think the taxpayer, it was ever intended that the taxpayer was paying a 3% subsidy against a development fee.
I see more businesses doing that, charging the 3% when you use a credit card.
Well, that court ruling was for everybody, it wasn't just for government.
Right, right. Anyone else? All right, I see.
I would just like to have some kind of statement of intent. It's probably in there already, but so that future councils understand where they can go to see the detail on how this is, how the money's being used, just to make sure that there's confidence in the, in this and future requests for fee increases. Because as I say, I'm having a hard time getting my arms around it myself, because it seems like some stuff could be in, some stuff could be not in, especially relationship to hardware, software, or systems. I just would like to have more confidence in future groups, not us, being able to see how this is being used.
I'm sure it could be in our budget report too, right, Dan? I mean, that's, yeah. And the audit report?
Well, since we'll be tracking this fee separately, anyone at any time could request to look at the general ledger and see the status of transactions in that account, including any member of the public, not just a member of the council, if they so want to receive that information. And then again, your independent auditor looks at all dedicated accounts to make sure that the transactions are appropriate in those accounts.
Right, right.
That is satisfactory. Thank you. That's helpful information.
Great. Anyone, any other council? No? All right, and we're now going to open it to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions on this Resolution 6819? All right, I see none. So, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council. So, council members, any more questions, or do you want to make a motion for the Resolution 6819?
You want to do it, Larry?
No, I'm just kind of a, I don't have a problem with the first fee, because that one's easy. That one's easy because, you know, credit card, 3%.
Okay.
The other one's a little harder, because if it's part of the use of a permit that you're already getting, why isn't it already included in the cost, the total cost of what we normally charge for the permitting process?
Yeah. I may be able to help with that.
That'd be great, Terry.
In order, if you did want to wrap it into your existing permit fees, you would have to re-adopt every one of your permit fees. So, you'd need to come back and modify all of your building permit fees, your encroachment permit fees, and you'd have to conduct another study that you periodically do conduct. But you, those studies are undertaken every several years. In the interim years, you typically do like a cost of living adjustment. But in this case, another benefit of this, well, the primary benefit is that distinct identification of the account and use of the funds, and really dedicating that revenue for a specific purpose rather than just ongoing inspections or things like that. But in order to consider, if you did decide, I want to just wrap it into all of my permit fees, then you have to come back and modify every one of your hundreds of permit fees.
But you've already done the analysis. You said it's 5%. So, we would increase everything by 5%, and it would just be packaged into the cost of the permitting. As far as segregating it, we're not putting this in a restricted fund. It's purely accounting. So, if you did that, it's all general fund expenditure anyway.
It is accounting, but you are defining what you are going to use these revenues for. The staff report, the City Council Agenda Report, does identify that this fee has an intended purpose. You could, you could adjust all of your fees.
Yeah, but see, unless you were running Yeah, but see, unless you were running a surplus in that, that account, you would always have to pay off the expense associated with the technology anyway. So why would it have to be in a separate account, because it's still a general fund expenditure, and so are these fees? These are general fund, you know, it's general fund revenue. I'm trying to make it less complicated, not more.
I think it sounds more complicated.
No, this is actually less, because you just, right now, they've already done the analysis, you add 5% to everything.
But you said we have to require public hearings for all of those?
No, no, it's one public hearing for the whole schedule.
Yeah, for all of them, which we do anyway, on an annual basis.
If, if there's a preference for the vice mayor's approach, we can do that. I think I'd want to point out, and I think what Mr. Mathis is trying to get at, right now, the way we've proposed it, it requires us legally to document the use of this particular 5% and how, and charge the expenditures and make sure they're fully compliant. If we build it into our overhead, that gets a little more challenging for the public to find in terms of accountability. But we can do it that way, as, as overhead, we can certainly do it that way. And I appreciate, from a fee-charging standpoint, it's, it's a little simpler, but...
Okay, well, I'm certainly not gonna fight this. I mean, it just wasn't clear to me from the very beginning what it was trying to do, so...
I mean, I'm inclined to support this, but I see, I see uncertainty in the future, because, and maybe the question is naive, but how do you address things such as software as a service? So you, with, to assure payers of the fee that they're not getting hit twice, for example? How, I mean, how do you sort this out in the future without knowing really how you're going to be addressing some stuff?
Well, with all your fees, you should periodically examine them to make sure you're not over-recovering. So the city does do that on an ongoing basis. It examines, compares inflows to outflows to ensure there's no over-recovery. That would be done on a periodic basis. So I don't think we have to worry about this being lost in the ether. There are several, each year, at the same time you do your CPI adjustment, you also make minor refinements to your fee schedule, where staff has looked and said, this year, we don't want to CPI that fee for X, Y, and Z reason. This year, we want to do more than CPI, because we're seeing a change in our policies and procedures. So the council can always choose to modify a fee that it's adopted. Once you get some history with it and say, you know, we got our vendors, and we've implemented a system, or permits went through the roof, or permit volume dropped significantly, and we're not seeing the revenues we anticipated, or we're having challenges, monitoring the collection of the fee, or the way the fee is implemented, you can modify at any time the council. It would just take a regular meeting to modify it, had we done a regular meeting. But the idea is not that this would be just frozen in time and never re-examined.
I admire your optimism with respect to that, but I, in my...
We, we actually do it.
I've never, I've never seen in decades of my experience rowing back a fee.
Well, you're, and I doubt, the reality is, I doubt, I have not seen a city reduce technology costs in the last decade. The only thing that's happened with technology is exponential increases in costs.
I just want some sense of confidence that we don't have to worry about redundant fees.
Okay.
Well, I think that's why we have our staff to pay attention to.
Again, I think that's why we have to trust our good staff.
Larry, do you wanna make another comment?
No, I was just gonna say, we don't have full-cost recovery anyway. You know, we're always gonna be subsidizing a part of, it is part of a city service, so...
Right.
I don't think we have anything to worry about in terms of like overfilling.
Okay. So we brought it to the council, do we wanna continue talking about the resolution? Or do we wanna make a motion?
I'll move the resolution, 6819, for the City of Larkspur adopting various fees for service.
And may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? I see none, the resolution passes. Terry, thank you very much, that was a very thorough presentation. All right, I'm gonna close a public hearing, and we're gonna move on to the business items. Hello, Chris Morrison and Molly Morrison.
Can you make a quick proclamation?
Proclamation. You know, because you're so cute, I think you can. This is my husband, Chris Morrison, and my daughter, Molly Morrison. Wow, this is my last night. I'm just gonna give a hug. Wow.
Thank you.
Wow.
We have rogue, rogue attendees.
You guys all look pretty nice.
Thank you very much.
Love you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Wow, perfect timing for the public hearing. Now I'll close a public hearing. Beautiful flowers. All right, we're gonna move on to business items. Thank you both very much.
She's got a lot of work to do, Chris.
Thank you, love you both. Business items, 8.1, adopt the City of Larkspur uncontrolled crosswalk policy. Julian Skinner, Public Works Director, you are on.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, members of the public. Julian Skinner, Public Works Director for the city. So tonight, our request is to adopt an uncontrolled crosswalk policy.
Julian, we're asking that you turn on or speak into the mic, please.
Is that better?
Much.
So the agenda for tonight, I'll give a brief introduction into crosswalks and the policy, and then walk a little bit through the process of what's contained in the policy, as well as show what we call a toolbox, which is potential improvements for crosswalks. So the first question is, this is an uncontrolled crosswalk policy, and so what is an uncontrolled crosswalk? So basically, it's a pedestrian crossing of a street that is not at a location where a vehicle would ordinarily stop. So we're talking about not at a traffic signal, not at a stop sign. There's two examples shown on the slide here. The one on the left is known as a mid-block crossing, so this is, there's no vehicle intersection here, this is a straight street, and there's a place for pedestrians to cross, marked by lines here. That's a mid-block crossing, and it's uncontrolled, because a vehicle has no reason to stop there other than for a pedestrian in the crosswalk. The image on the right is at a vehicle intersection. This is Magnolia and Creekside, and there are stop signs on the side street, but Magnolia is not stop-controlled here. So other than a pedestrian being in the crosswalk, the vehicles do not stop at this location, so even though it's an intersection, it's still considered an uncontrolled crosswalk. And another type of uncontrolled crosswalk are what are called implied crosswalks. And so per California law, the extension of a sidewalk at an intersection across another street is an implied crosswalk, even whether it's marked or not. So this photo is South Aliso in the background, and Via Casitas coming down to meet South Aliso. You can clearly see there's a crosswalk marked for the extension of what would be the sidewalk on South Aliso, but there are sidewalks on Via Casitas, and so there are implied crosswalks crossing South Aliso, where these sidewalks line up with Via Casitas. So these are another example of unmarked, uncontrolled crosswalks. And so what we're doing with the uncontrolled crosswalk policy is addressing two issues. One is, when is it appropriate to mark an uncontrolled crosswalk? So I showed you examples of uncontrolled crosswalks, both that are marked and that are unmarked, and so we often get questions from the public about marking, or putting the striping down for crosswalks. And so this policy looks at when is that appropriate? And the next question is, as we'll go through some of the latter slides, there are many different things you can do with a crosswalk. You can put striping down, put signs and on and so forth, all the way up to doing full-blown pedestrian over-crossings, like we have on East of Francis Drake. And so what we'll go through is a process where we evaluate a location to see if it's appropriate to mark a crosswalk there, and then there's a prioritization, which is kind of a score of that crosswalk, which is actually used more for grant applications, for a competitive nature, and then a decision matrix that maps the characteristics of that location with certain tools for improving a crosswalk, and then the toolbox itself. So you started with an evaluation, which is a question of, should we mark or should we not mark a crosswalk? And so the other thing I should point out is that this policy is, is not a be-all and end-all, it's not a one-case-fits-all. There is still engineering judgment and analysis that needs to go into every one of these locations. What the crosswalk policy is, is a tool to assist us and to refine the marking and improvements of crosswalks throughout the city, so we're doing them consistently. So to mark or not mark a crosswalk, you're looking at a couple of factors. One is pedestrian volumes, whether there's actually a need for pedestrians to cross there, whether there are pedestrians crossing there, proximity to pedestrian generating land uses, so closeness to schools, shopping centers, things like that, and then a distance to a nearest crosswalk. The further away a crosswalk is from another crosswalk, then the more reason there may be to mark a crosswalk there. And then also site distance, which is kind of summed up, the site distance, but it goes to a lot of other things too, such as safety factors. So we don't wanna mark a crosswalk in a location where a vehicle would not be able to see a pedestrian crossing the street there. This is the evaluation flowchart that is part of the policy, and it kinda goes through each one of those factors. It's kind of a yes-no process for arriving at whether you should mark a crosswalk or not, and it's based on the volumes of pedestrians, the proximity to other crosswalks, and things like that. So that's the first step in looking at these locations, is it doesn't make sense to mark a location there or not. And then the priority list, which as I mentioned before, is more of a scoring that we use for grant applications. As the city manager mentioned before, we did get a grant for doing some crosswalk improvements on South Aliso, so we definitely went through this process as part of our application for the grant, to show how we would like to have crosswalks at these locations and how they were appropriate. And so it kinda takes another step up from just whether you should mark it or not, it actually looks at the volumes of pedestrians, and it also gets into some collision history at those locations too. And that's the worksheet, that's kinda hard to read, but it goes through each one of those items, and assigns a certain point value to those. And then we get into what is really the, the main part of the crosswalk policy, which is the matrix. And so, again, we're not the first city, or town, or agency that's looked into this, and there's a lot of good guidance out there, there's a lot of other good policies that our consultant has looked at. And most cities have adopted crosswalk policies that are consistent with the Federal Highway Administration's previous work, most recently a 2017 guide for improving pedestrian safety at uncontrolled crossing locations. And what that study did was looked at 2,000 marked and unmarked, uncontrolled crossings, and it looked at various factors relative to that location, and it looked at effectiveness of various improvements, and based on some characteristics, such as the number of lanes that the street has, whether there's a median or not, the amount of traffic that is on that street, and also the posted speed for that traffic. It then, again, hard to read, but this is in the policy that was an attachment to the staff report. It has a matrix that has all of these various tools that may be appropriate for that location. And so, I've got a little blow-up here, that goes, one of the lower-speed, low-volume, a two-lane road. So how you read this matrix is, there's different numbers in there that relate to different improvements that you could do. And it has, and again, none of this is a mandate, this is not a document that says, you've looked at this crosswalk, you have to do this, this, and this. Again, it's an engineering analysis, and it's, there's a lot of engineering judgment. This is a guide to, for the engineer to go through that process. And again, these are not mandates, so as we go through this, and we look at a crosswalk and find that some improvements are necessary, then we look at the next phase, which is then, how do you fund it, and where does it fit in with our capital program? Are we gonna pave that street, and should it be part of that improvement? Or is there a grant that's coming out that would afford us the opportunity to pay for such improvements? And so for this, this is a low-volume road, less than 30 miles an hour, which most streets in Larkspur are. Two lanes, one in each direction, no median, so a typical residential street. So it has a different, different categories of what improvements might be appropriate at that location. And so, basically, if the number shows up in this box, it's something that, based on the FHWA research, could be appropriate at that location. So this is showing as improvements 1, 2, 3, and 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. If the number doesn't show up there, it's, they're saying it's not appropriate for that location. So, for example, it's off the sheet, but we'll get into some of the toolbox, it shows what these numbers mean later, but a pedestrian overcrossing would not be appropriate for a two-lane, less than 25, less than 30 mile-an-hour street. One, because it wouldn't get used.
Julian, sorry.
Yes?
Sorry, I thought you were gonna pass to the next slide. Keep going, Dan has a question about that slide. Don't pass. Can Dan ask?
When you're finished.
When you're finished, all right.
Yep. And so again, none of the numbers in here are mandates for what needs to be done at that intersection. There's different clues for if the, if the color is the dark blue or the lighter blue, which actually kinda looks like white here. But this is saying that the 1, 2, 3, 4, which are the basic treatments, which is striping or marking the crosswalk with high visibility, putting signs up at the intersection are things that you would look at typically at every intersection if it's uncontrolled. And then you get into the 6, 7, 8s, which are more intensive treatments, like curb returns, putting splitter islands in that have more cost, and are basically looked at on a case-by-case basis, and may be appropriate, depending on the engineering analysis for that intersection.
This is an amazing way to organize information. But I have a question, what, on number 12, what is a road diet?
So a road diet is not typically associated as a crosswalk improvement, but it's a corridor improvement that can actually help a crosswalk function also. So a road diet is basically, you take a road that is, say, four lanes, or three lanes, two lanes in each direction, and you convert that road into one lane in each direction. So you're basically making the road thinner by reducing the number of travel lanes. And so a side effect of that is, you have less travel lanes for a pedestrian to cross, and now they're only crossing two travel lanes versus four. So it's a pedestrian crosswalk improvement, but typically, a road diet is triggered by other factors, other than just trying to improve a crosswalk.
Thank you.
Julian, could you define what a pedestrian hybrid beacon is, or a hawk?
So I struggled with the order of these slides, because there's, each one of these is shown in detail later on.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was, I wanted to show the context for where these improvements go, and, before I got into them. So I'll go through the slides, and if I miss something, let me know, and I'll come back and explain it.
Okay. And just before you move on, a pedestrian is defined, I noticed in here, it's a certain number of older people versus children. How do they define older person? Do you know?
I don't know that there's a definition, per se. Those are, again, guidelines, and so I know, for instance, when Transportation Authority Marin does her studies for crossing guards, they have, they separate schoolchildren...
Yeah, I saw that in here.
From other pedestrians. I think for something like this, it's more related to what the generator would be, if there's a care facility nearby, or something like that. They certainly don't go out and interview people and ask how old they are.
Yeah.
And again, this is part of a flowchart, that's part of the engineering judgment, and so there's no, it has numbers in here, but again, these feed into an engineering judgment, so there's no hard and fast number of people that were over a certain, certain age.
I was just asking, because I'm starting to learn more about age-friendly, and how we help to look at policy through older persons' eyes, so thank you for that clarification.
So I'm gonna get into the toolbox now to talk about what some of these improvements could be. And they start out with simple striping, which is paint on the street or markings, and then signage, and there's dollar signs here. These get progressively more expensive as we go through them, but I do wanna reiterate that more is not necessarily better. It's not better for the city to take every one of these expensive treatments and put them at every crosswalk. That defeats the purpose of what we're trying to do. For example, we put some flashing lights out on Magnolia in a couple of locations, and we're getting a lot of requests for those. Those are appropriate at certain... Those are appropriate at certain locations. As you can imagine, if we went out and put those at every single crosswalk, all 87 uncontrolled crosswalks in town, they would lose their effectiveness at the location where we would want them. People would become accustomed to seeing the flashing lights in a crosswalk, and they wouldn't help us emphasize that crossing location in the area where they're warranted. So they, every tool has a specific location where they're appropriate and not, and they get more expensive, but it doesn't necessarily mean more expensive is better. So again, as we go through them, obviously, striping and marking are the least expensive. And then when you start moving curbs around, you start getting into some costs, and then you get into electronics such as signals and the rapid rectangular flashing beacons, and then the most expensive is actual new infrastructure, where you're creating new bridges or pedestrian overcrossings.
Julian, what about the flags that I see Cordera using?
Yeah, so the flags have popped up here and there. They're not actually recognized by state or the federal guidelines that we use. So they're not, anything that we put out on the street, we're governed by the manual on uniform traffic control devices, so that that's why lights at the traffic signals are a certain color and signs that are regulatory say certain things. And that's why we try to stay in that toolbox of what's in that manual, so that as people drive from community to community, there's an expectation of what a sign means. There is no adopted, here's what a flag means, and I understand that some communities have experimented with them, but that's not something that our traffic consultant is recommending for our toolbox at this time.
Okay. That's curious. Thank you.
So we'll start with kind of the first level, which is high-visibility crosswalks. And so this is, the standard crosswalk is just a line, a painted line on each side of the extension of the sidewalk. This is the next step up, which is referred to as high-visibility, or some people call them continental or zebra crosswalks, and they're basically bars that are more visible to the driver. A lot of these things we're going to look at for crosswalk improvements are aimed to increase the visibility of a crossing to a driver. So these are shown in white. You'll see them in yellow in school zones. And so per the California Vehicle Code, if a crosswalk is contiguous to a school property, it has to be yellow. And then depending on how far away you are from a school, your crosswalks stay yellow for about 600 feet, and then you can do certain analysis to determine whether you want to keep going with yellow beyond that radius past a school. Lighting is another item that's not directly crosswalk-related, but they can improve conditions. And so one of the things we do when we look at these crosswalks is we don't just go during the day, but we make a point to go look at them in the evening too, because again, what we're looking at here is a potential conflict between a vehicle and a pedestrian, and the visual between the two is what's important. And so at night, lighting is a big part of that. And so for a lot of what we look at, it's important to go out at night, because it may be a matter of putting lighting up is the best solution for that location, so that the pedestrian is more visible. And then signs, so this is a high-visibility sign, so these are the yellow signs. There's also kind of a fluorescent green sign that they use, are high-visibility, and they point down to the crosswalks. And then there's also advanced signs that can be placed, depending on the speed of the road, in advance of this to give a warning that there's a crosswalk ahead. And then these are relatively new, within the last five years. This is a change in those state-adopted guidelines for markings, universal markings that I talked about. They started putting these triangles down on the pavement that are to mimic a yield sign. And so these are kind of the yield signs version of a stop bar. So these triangles, or shark's teeth some people call them, is a yield line that indicates where you should yield when it's appropriate to yield. And so these have been used in conjunction with crosswalks on multi-lane roads, and so the idea of this is it's better for the car to stop further back from the crosswalk, so a car in an adjacent lane has a better view of the crosswalk, and you don't have a pedestrian walking out right in front of a car that stopped right at the crosswalk. So again, these are great for crosswalk visibility, but really are only appropriate to multi-lane roads, where you're trying to get that driver in a second lane, not blinded by a driver in an adjacent lane. In-street crossing signs have been around for a while. These can be at both curb lines, and these are basically mounted to the pavement. They're down at pavement level, they're not up on a post, and they're typically flexible, because they will get hit by vehicles from time to time. But there's a number of different versions of these that are accepted, and these can go in the double yellow in the center line also, to be more effective, as well as the shoulder lines. Tighten curbs and bulbouts. Now we get into where we're actually making physical changes to the road. This is by an elementary school in Nevada. You can see it's got the high-visibility sign there, but for this location, the other thing they wanted to do was reduce that crossing distance. And so in the foreground, you can see the road, and it narrows down to a point where the crosswalk is. So these are called bulbouts or curb extensions, and there are two components to this. One is you're trying to reduce the amount of time that the pedestrian is in the crosswalk, that they're in potential conflict with a vehicle. So you pull the sidewalk out, you make that crossing length shorter, so you reduce that potential time that they're in conflict. The other thing it does is when the pedestrian is waiting to cross the street, they're further out into the street, they're still on the sidewalk, but they're more visible to an oncoming driver. And if there's parking on the street, they're out beyond the parked cars, so they're more visible for an oncoming driver. And the other part of that, that you can't quite see in the background, is as well as doing the bulbouts, sometimes you tighten the curb radius, so you push the sidewalk further out into the intersection. It forces the cars to go slower around the intersection, so they have a lower speed when they're actually crossing over the crosswalks. Again, those are more appropriate in residential areas and commercial areas. It's hard to do, because you do have to accommodate turning truck traffic. And this is an example of a refuge island. And so this is, this one was kind of easier to do, because there was already a median, because the road is divided. But you can also put these refuge islands in on streets that don't ordinarily have medians. For example, there's one in front of the Lark Theater. And so this is an attempt to break up the crossing, so you're only crossing one lane at a time. And it's also, anything in the street, like those signs we looked at before, is a visual, is a cue to the driver that they're not just driving in a vehicle environment, there's pedestrians around, and there's a crosswalk upcoming. Here's kind of the next level of that. This is in Nevada, where you've got two lanes in each direction, and so this is called a staggered or a Z-crossing, and rather than just going straight through the island, the median is actually staggered, so that once you cross one leg, you're then forced to turn right and then turn left across the other lane. And what this does is it forces you to turn and look at oncoming traffic before you then cross the next lane. So as opposed to just going straight across through a median, in this one, it forces you to actually turn and physically look in the direction of oncoming traffic before you go through. Again, it's a step up from the basic median refuge that we showed, but it's not always warranted. For example, in this case, it's because there's two lanes and high-traffic volumes in each lane. And then we get into the signals, and so the first class of the signals, and we have a few of these in town already, as I mentioned, is RRFBs, which stands for Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon. And so this is basically the high-visibility sign with a light bar underneath it. And again, this has gone through many evolutions, and there are a lot of studies that have resulted in this being the preferred and the most recognized by drivers. I think when this technology first came out, a lot of cities were putting the lights actually in the pavement. There were a lot of issues with that, both from a maintenance standpoint and from a visibility. And so this is kind of the latest and greatest, and this is kind of what's been used for a while now. There are also other signs that have the lights around the sign, but this one with the light bar that kind of mimics an emergency siren, not siren, but emergency light bar, is the one that has shown to have the best results for being recognized by drivers.
I have a question.
Yes?
Can you go back to the zigzag staggered, yeah, there? Are there lighting standards that go with these? Because I myself have, I'm embarrassed to say, encountered these at night, where there's no lighting, on a bicycle, where you, where there may be no traffic or any activity, and you're, there's a, just an assumption about not running into a railing that you don't see.
So you're staggering.
I mean, given the, well, if you're headed across, it seems like an accident waiting to happen if you can't see it.
Yeah, so this one actually did have a light, because it was at an intersection, there was already a light there, and that would be part of the, that's part of the engineering judgment as you go through the toolbox, is looking at all of those components. And by the time you get to an improvement like this, the lighting is lower down on the list, so you would have already crossed that and got to that.
So that is an important consideration. Thank you.
So while this is the first of the signals, it's not actually a traffic control device. This is a flashing light that alerts you that there is a pedestrian in the crosswalk. It does not mandate you to stop. If the lights are flashing and there's no pedestrian in the crosswalk, you don't have to stop. This is merely a warning, it's an advanced sign, basically. The next level up is actually a recognized traffic control device. And so this is the HAWK system, and the HAWK is a simplified traffic signal that is for pedestrians only. And so it consists of a push button, so it's an on-call, pedestrian pushes the button, and then there's a series of lights that are above the street on the mast arm, and there's a yellow and a red progression, a yellow warning light, and then a red progression for a vehicle. This is a, and this is an MUTCD control device, so the red means you have to stop for a pedestrian in this location. But again, this is pedestrian activated, it's at an intersection where there's no traffic signals, so it's not for control of vehicles, it's merely to allow the pedestrian break in traffic to cross the street. And then beyond that, there is a full-blown pedestrian signal, which is the standard red, amber, green progression of the streetlights, but it's activated by a pedestrian. Here, this is at the new transit facility in Nevada. There's no street intersection here, there's no vehicle traffic, other than, redwood's actually divided here, so it's just traffic on redwood going in one direction, and then a pedestrian pushes the button, and it goes through the cycle of yellow and red to stop the traffic, so a pedestrian can cross. And then for your really high-volume roads, your high-speed roads, and your high-ped needs, when you get to the very bottom right corner on the matrix, you would land at something like a pedestrian underpass or overpass. And so, for example, there are a couple of these on East of Francis Drake, this one that's in the photo, and then the one that's further down by the shopping center. There's also one in the county at Wolf Grade, and so these are for your busier streets. And so just want to go back to the matrix and kind of show, now, I showed one before that was residential, and so this is your four-lane road, and this is for high volumes, so we're talking more than 15,000 cars a day. And now you get into where it says, yes, you should do the high-visibility, yes, you should put signs up, but you should also consider all of these things, and it's everything all the way up to an overcrossing and a pedestrian signal for those locations. And so that wraps up the presentation. And again, so the request tonight is for the council to adopt this policy, which gives staff some guidance and a toolbox to move forward with. As was mentioned in the staff report, we do get requests throughout the year to install new crosswalks or to enhance existing crosswalks, and we do look at those facilities when we have capital projects that are around crosswalks, and when there are a call for grants opportunities out there. And then we also work with our Safe Routes to School working group, and there are, from time to time, there are crosswalk improvements that come about from those meetings. And so this gives staff a good tool to use to evaluate crosswalks and when it's appropriate to improve or not improve moving forward. So, thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Julian, one toolbox you didn't mention was the light that's near Marine Country Mart, and I know a couple of friends might have gotten tickets, because when the pedestrian pushes the light, it does say cars cannot take a right. So sometimes when a pedestrian's walking, and it's green for them, then after they walk, the cars can make a right, but because that signal says do not take a right till the light changes. You didn't mention that toolbox.
Right. So that's another part of the signal. The one that's in Larkspur that actually does that is for, is actually not for the pedestrians, it's for the U-turning vehicles, it's to protect them. But there is one just like that in Cordera that was put there for pedestrians, and they have a number of them in San Rafael that are the illuminated no-right-turn signs.
I think they're great, yes.
Yeah. Yep. That's true.
Thank you. So in the pre-see report, it lists 20 key uncontrolled crosswalks in Larkspur. So I see all 20 of them here, and several have been mentioned by some of our public speakers. So I just would like to make sure to refer them to this. So it's my understanding that of these 20, and using the matrix, we would then do a separate analysis, let's say of number seven on there, to look at how it fits within that toolkit, 1 through 14 needed things. Is that correct?
Right. So what we're asking for tonight is adoption of the policy. There's no mandate for staff to move forward and evaluate however many of these crosswalks have come up. What we typically do is, if we have a project that is in proximity to a crosswalk or has a crosswalk located within it, or there's a grant proposal, then we look at improvements or striping the crosswalk as part of that project. The other reason this has come about is we are paving 20 miles of streets over the next four years, and we have a good opportunity to work some of these crosswalk improvements into our paving program as we move forward. So we thought it was appropriate, given that we do get requests from the community, there are a number of grants that are out there, and we're paving all these streets, that we get this policy in place, so we have a good guidance moving forward. The list of 20 captures most of what our phone calls are about, or the emails, or the inquiries, or the request to either stripe and unmarked, or to enhance one that's already marked. It's not, we're not necessarily saying we're going to get to those 20 in a year, or two years, or three years.
And there's no prioritizing of those 20, I noticed in the report. It's more, it's more of an overview, matrix analysis.
Correct. So the prioritization that's in there is more of a score, and we typically use it more for our grant applications. We're not trying to rank one city crosswalk versus another. We're trying to show to a granting agency that, hey, we've got a great need, look at all these pedestrians that cross here, look at all these pedestrian-generating facilities that are nearby, and unfortunately, you know, collision history and things like that are part of what go into a lot of those grant applications to make funding for those improvements more attractive. But we're not proposing to take all of the city crosswalks and funnel them into a prioritization, because they all have unique features, and sometimes there's funding available that is for specific locations, like the Safe Routes to School funding would only fund crosswalks that were in an adopted school plan. So a crosswalk may go through that matrix and have a high score, but if it's not near a school, it wouldn't be a good candidate for that grant.
Yeah. Great. And lastly, so, and a policy like this has a benefit to the city to be able to reach out for more grants, because now we have an analyzed matrix system that we've accepted if we plan to accept it. Is that correct?
Yes. So as part of applying for grants, they always look for studies or documents that have been adopted by a board that identify improvements that are appropriate at locations, yes.
Great, great. Okay.
Nice job, Julian. Thank you. Anyone else? Any other council member? Very thorough. No? Dan?
Only to say, I'm, again, astounded at how we continue to manage more and more complicated sets of circumstances, and I'm really grateful to have you on top of it. Thank you.
And Safe Routes to School appreciates it too. I'm now going to, any other council members? Okay, I'm going to open up to the public. Any of the public have any questions? Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, can I take this off? Thank you. Alana from West B again. You all probably don't know me, you're seeing me for the first time tonight, but I assure you that Julian and his predecessor are both very incredibly familiar with who I am, and my frustration level is high, only because I've been complaining for over 10 years. So I am here to advocate today on behalf of the schoolchildren and our senior community that are crossing West Baltimore on a regular basis. Since the school year has begun, I have actually driven my car to school seven times. I ride my kids with their bikes to school every day, and I cross West Baltimore Avenue. So I am very familiar with the traffic issues that are happening there. I have a dog also, who I walk multiple times a day across that street for over 10 years. And I probably cross that street more than anybody else on West Baltimore on a regular basis. And I probably cross that street more than anybody else on West Baltimore on a regular basis. So I can tell you that I've had multiple calls into the police department, so thank you very much. They were out there recently checking traffic. They had a gentleman in a green vest crossing with cones because of entrapment issues. And I was like, well, you know, I can't even walk out into the sidewalk until the cars are stopped, because I have to teach my children, who are nine and six right now, how appropriately to cross the street. He told me that was self-preservation. I said, no, that's real life. Having a gentleman cross the street in a green vest, I get it, there are laws surrounded around that, but self-- I mean, I can't-- I just can't do it. Nobody can walk out to West Baltimore without having the traffic completely stopped. Otherwise, I almost saw my neighbor get hit. And I know Julian's fairly familiar with that. That happened a few years ago. In the last 10 years, we've had those median signs that have said, I don't know, what are they called? The street crossing signs. We've had two of those. They're gone now because they've been run over by cars, as Julian suggested. So I am really here in hopes that we could get the RRFB installed in that area. I think it's really important. I attended the Safe Routes to School meeting a few months ago, and when I asked them what the safe route to school was for our children in the canyon, I was quite shocked and amazed to find out that there wasn't one. We have quite a few children living in the canyon who deserve the rite of passage that we all had when we were children to ride their bikes to school, and we're not offering that to them. I've contacted the Transportation Authority and talked to them about a crossing guard. Not going to work. That's a temporary solution to what is a permanent problem in our community at that intersection. And I think, really, I give a lot of credit to Corder Madera for putting the flags out. I would like to see those go out immediately. I'd really love to understand exactly why whoever created this study felt like that wasn't a good solution. If it's good enough for Corder Madera right now to get us through this interim time, I think it's good enough for Larkspur. I'd also then love to see this RRFB be installed there, or somewhere close, so that we can funnel our children from the canyon to the path. West Baltimore is that direct channel. Okay, so that's what I'm here advocating for. I would also like to understand, and I don't know, I'm sure there's studies, and I'm sure there are mathematics, you know, when, like, the Model T was rolling down the road, and, you know, 40 years ago, we didn't have the traffic problems and the distractions that we have today. And the only other light is Redwood, all the way down here. There's no stop signs. When you come around the corner, I think it's Piedmont, then we start hitting downhill. And people are gaining speed there, going right into the intersection at West Baltimore. And they're just not stopping. At night, when it's dark, there's a glare, people can't see. And then I also encourage you to think about it from the driver's perspective, okay? Right? I have a hard time seeing sometimes. Having those flashing lights there saves me as a driver, too.
Good.
So.
Great.
I really hope that we can make West Baltimore a priority. Thank you.
All right. Yep. Thank you. All right. Anybody else in the public like to make a comment? I see none. I'll bring it back to the council. Any other questions for Julian? All right, we have a Resolution 6919, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Larkspur adopting the City of Larkspur's uncontrolled crosswalk policy.
I'll move that the council adopt Resolution 69/19.
And may I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposes? None. It passes. Great. Julian, thank you. Very thorough. Appreciate it. Boy, when do you sleep? We have an introduction of ordinance 1022 repealing and reenacting Larkspur Municipal Code, Chapter 1404, Fire Code, adopting the 2019 California Fire Code, and Appendix A of the 2018 International Wildland Urban Interface Code with amendments supported by local findings and setting a public hearing for adoption of the ordinance. How are you, sir?
Good.
Good. Great to see you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
We need to talk louder. Please.
How's that?
It's much better. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. Reuben Martin, Fire Marshal at the Central Burn Fire Department. We're here this evening to introduce the 2019 California Fire Code, which is based off of the 2018 International Fire Code, and certain appendices. Every three years, the fire codes get updated at the national level through the International Code Council, and that is used as the model code for the California Fire Code. So that code was published and presented in January of 2019, which was then accepted by the State of California, California Building Standards Commission, which then made California amendments to that model code. They went ahead and published the 2019 California Fire Code in July 1st of 2019, which then gives local municipalities an opportunity to go ahead and make local amendments. The code that we have before you here, for the most part, is primarily the same code that we've adopted previously in 2017, with some changes to some renumbering and reorganization of some of the code sections, based on some new codes that have been introduced. In the 2017 ordinance that was adopted, there was a section in there in Chapter 6 that dealt with residential solar panels on rooftops. Now that section has been codified within the California Fire Code, so we went ahead and removed that section out of our local ordinance. Some of the other things that we did is we cleaned up some of the language when dealing around Chapter 49, which deals with properties within the wildland urban interface, to clarify what the responsibility of homeowners are for defensible space. And so it made it a little cleaner for them. Prior, it was set up in a paragraph format, so we broke it down into a bullet point, which will be a lot easier to understand as a homeowner. We also created a section of 4908, which separated roadside maintenance for vegetation away from the defensible space side and added it as its own separate section, because we felt as fire protection officers and fire marshals that roadside maintenance is not a defensible space issue, it's an ingress and egress issue for our primary and secondary evacuations. So this code, as I mentioned before, is previously what we've adopted. All the fire marshals and fire prevention officers in the county have been getting together bi-monthly since July, reviewing the new presentation for the California Fire Code and then making local amendments. And every fire agency within the county will be adopting this exact same code.
Great.
With that, I'm open for any questions, if you have any.
Council members, any questions? Larry?
I just have a general question as a result of the Public Safety Power shut-offs. The CPUC has zoned things off and called them high-fire-threat districts. Do you find that those maps are fairly consistent to what has been designated as the, what, high-fire? High-hazard fires? Yeah.
Yeah, I think with the recent hazard tiers that PG&E has put out, they're fairly consistent with our high-fire-hazard severity zones.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
I just, curious about, I know you talked about the changes to solar panels. I know it's not in here, but I'm just curious as to what the Fire Code is looking at for some of these solar panels that are actually roofing tiles, like Elon Musk is putting out with his company, where the roof is actually a solar roof, as opposed to something that's added on top.
Yeah, so that first was introduced, I believe, in 2017. Tesla came to the City of Larkspur with their integrated roof panels. And we look at them, they're still the same requirements. The entire roof isn't solarized. It's only certain portions of it, and the portions that are not solarized still provide a pathway for firefighter safety.
Don't you still, I mean, I don't know the composition of the tiles. Are they designed to be part of a fire resistant assembly?
Yeah, so they're rated to be Class A material. We've seen demonstrations where you can actually do firefighting operations on them. For us, as a firefighter safety standpoint, we're real leery of getting firefighters on top of the roof of those, because they seem like, they're almost like glass when you stand on them. They're pretty slick.
Yeah.
So we just have to, for us, operationally, it's a different mindset that you have to know that as you're going in there, that it's an integrated solar panel.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So this is still the fire hazard reduction is still at 30 feet from structures. I thought it was going down to five.
So what they look at is your defensible space zones have to be 30 to 150 feet. So you have to maintain 30 feet up to 150 feet.
Right.
So what they're looking at is, what you're talking about is that ignition-free zone that was coming down through AB 1516.
Yeah, the five-foot zone.
It had made its way all the way through the legislature, and then Governor Newsom pushed it back.
That's it, yeah.
So we're kind of waiting to see what's coming down at the state level.
I forgot about that.
Because it would make it a little more palatable and easier for the public to, I guess, digest if we bring across that.
Yeah. I forgot about that. You're right. He did not veto, he didn't veto it, he just--
He just sent it back to--
Sent it back to the committee.
To make some further amendments. I believe one of the language was it considered any violation on there as a misdemeanor.
Okay.
And so I think that was some of the--
Thanks, I forgot about that, yeah.
You may have just given him a new nickname, though, the Governor.
The Governor.
How cute. All right, council members, any more questions?
No.
I'm going to open up to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions? No? All right. So council members, we have an ordinance to, we need a motion for the ordinance, correct? Dan, correct? Sky, correct?
The motion would be to waive reading and to introduce the ordinance.
Okay.
I will move that we introduce the proposed ordinance 1042, adopting the 2019 California Fire Code, prescribing regulations governing conditions hazardous to life and property from fire explosion, providing for the issuance of permits for hazardous uses of our operations, and establishing a Bureau of Fire Prevention and providing officers therefore in defining their powers and duties, and repealing ordinance 1016, and set a public hearing on the proposed ordinance at the date and time of the next regularly scheduled city council meeting. This is a introduction of the ordinance, a second reading?
The second reading would occur at the public hearing.
Okay. Right, I'll second that.
Great. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone says no? No? Okay. It passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Reuben, thanks again for all the firefighters and what you do for the county. Really appreciate it. You guys work so hard.
Thank you.
It's great. Thank you. Thanks for the nice report. All right, we'll move on to 8.3, Authorization for the City of Larkspur to become a non-charter additional member of the California Community Housing Agency. I look forward to hearing all about this. Dan, snap report, please.
Your planning and building director, Neil Toff, was kind enough to give the city manager and the city attorney credit for this report, but he did quite a bit of the heavy lifting, so I've asked him to do the talking.
Great. Hi, Neil. Good to see you.
So I get the other, the fun part of the report.
There you go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the city council. Excuse me. We're here tonight to forward the city's goals to help address the housing needs that California is experiencing in their housing crisis. In this case, we're attempting to address what's termed as the missing middle, and that is developing affordable housing opportunities for those households with incomes that are really too high for most forms of subsidy and support, but too low to truly afford to live in Marin County at our current prices, real estate prices. And so this is for general workforce housing, teachers, police, fire, planners, people of all sorts, who do have relatively good incomes, but do find it challenging to meet the affordability levels in Marin County. The California Community Housing Agency, or CALCHA, is a newly formed JPA out of Kings County, Joint Powers Authority, which provides housing opportunities for households between 80% to 120% of average, medium income for the region. This model uses tax-exempt housing revenue bonds to finance the purchase of properties. And there are currently five other non-charter members, which we are seeking to become one of. Most recently, last week, the Marin County Board of Supervisors voted to join the California Community Housing Agency as a additional non-charter member. And my understanding is they're now closing on their third property, the CALCHA. The model provides restrictions, affordability restrictions for the life of 30-year bonds, so this would be a 30-year restriction. There are several benefits in this approach. The city or the local agency is party to review and approve any purchase within the boundaries of Larkspur. This is done administratively. It's not done through a public hearing process. It's done through the agreement and oversight of the city manager and the city attorney and the finance department. The agreement requires non-displacement for current residents within these rental sites, so people who may exceed the income limits can continue to live there. It's only as tenant spaces begin to turn over that the income restrictions begin to get applied. The restrictions are to 40% of the annual income, but as I understand, the goal is to make it up to 30%, and this can happen through the particular pro forma of the project. The city also has the option, but not the obligation, to eventually purchase the property after 15 years. So between 15 to 30 years, the city retains the option to purchase the property and/or otherwise can assign that option to another entity, like the county or a nonprofit organization that might continue to maintain the housing or else revise the housing after 30 years towards other forms of affordable housing. Now, we do note, from a revenue standpoint, this does, the property would become, if within a nonprofit or an agency, would be exempt from property tax revenue. And I do know, would also note, it does not actually contribute to the city's RENA requirements or RENA obligations. In the case of preservation or conversion of existing housing, there is count that can go, but that goes towards low or very low income. So again, and that somewhat reflects the challenge of this missing middle of moderate income, is there's less in terms of grants and subsidies that go towards that workforce housing. So this is a new model for affordable housing. It's raised a lot of questions. We know the county has been working with staff and from CALCHA, and as well as San Rafael and ourselves, we've had a number of questions. The driving force really behind this model is a local firm named Catalyst, the Catalyst Housing Group. And Jordan Moss is the founder of Catalyst, and he is the, actually a resident of Larkspur, and I believe he's present in the audience tonight and available for questions. Their model generally works on a minimum size of about 100 to 200 units or more, and they do develop the agreements, the pro forma for the project, which then sets up the ability to finance through the CALCHA. So CALCHA is essentially the owner. Catalyst works to help create the sale, the purchase of the bonds and the sale, and also the management of the properties. And so again, we've had a number of questions. We've gotten a lot of, I think most are questions. They've been, whether it's been CALCHA staff or Catalyst, they've been very responsive, and I think they've addressed most of our concerns. Any project that comes forward is going to have some very specific issues relative to the-- is going to have some very specific issues relative to the pro forma of that particular site. So with that, we are recommending that the city council adopt a resolution to become a non-charter additional member of the California Community Housing Agency. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. We have Sky here as well, and as I said, Jordan Moss is available for any questions.
Great. Thanks Neil. Council members, we have any questions? Dan?
Can you think of any reasons why we shouldn't do this?
No, and I, I think Mr. Toff, I should disclose, we first heard about this idea several months ago, and our enthusiasm was tempered by making sure we understood the model. I want to thank Myers-Navey's staff because they helped us really dig into it, and we looked at what other agencies were discovering, and it's the only upside.
Great. Good question, Dan.
So if I understand this right, so we would be joining a JPA as an, as a non-chartered member, and there are three chartered members, or is it just Kings County at this time? In other words, how many cities are now participating in this JPA?
Well, if, if I, as I understand it, there's four, four other non-charter members, and then additionally now the county, so there's five non-charter members.
And do they intend to limit it so that it's a certain number of cities to participate, or is it going to be open to however many want to? And I don't know how that governance would then work.
So in this particular structure, there's only the two charter members that are required by law to form the JPA, and then they're proposing that all the remaining entities that join are in this second tier of category. That's advantageous because it insulates, say, Larkspur from having to deal with any of the administrative issues of the Joint Powers Authority, because our interest is only to facilitate CAL-CHA's participation in the housing market here. We're only trying to facilitate their ability with their partner Catalyst to potentially acquire property and apply this model. We're not proposing that we get into the minutia of, of operating the Joint Powers Authority.
And the liabilities that might happen for-
That may or may not be incurred. And so this is a nice model because it allows any city in the state of California that option to join. So I think is, Neil was saying, we'd be the fifth or the sixth?
We would be the sixth.
The sixth entity to come in on this sort of second tier.
And did we find out about it mostly, I mean, early on, because we're pretty small compared to what other entities could join, cities could join? Is it because sort of an educational local resource?
I think because Catalyst is actually based here.
Okay.
They probably were, it was easy to start making these connections to the Marin community, although I think it was actually your city attorney that first told us he had heard about this model, so.
Has Myers-Navey had actually worked on the bond financing, right?
We had done some work for Catalyst, and, and so I'd heard about the program, and I thought that it was an interesting one for communities that were looking for, you know, opportunities to create affordable housing that might not have otherwise existed.
And it's only new projects? It's not taking existing structure or existing developments and repurposing them?
Yeah, it, it's actually primarily existing developments and-
Oh, I missed that, okay.
I mean, and repurposing and those existing developments is their primary model in California.
And we had a comment a couple of hours ago about the exclusion of mobile homes from some of these things. Where do mobile homes fit into this structure, or do they, that type of a dwelling?
Well, Jordan Moss is here, so I could kind of have him give you the perspective from Catalyst, given that their knowledge of this model. I think it's questionable whether mobile homes, or at least if they're, again, they need something on a certain scale of 100-plus units, and it's possible that a mobile homes might fit into that sort of model, but it is a bit of a different structure in terms of mobile homes where you're renting the space and not necessarily the facility. So it, it's something that we could, we've talked about and wanted to explore, but didn't want to put too far off this opportunity just to simply join the JPA. I don't think any model is entirely out of the question when you're in the, once you're in the JPA.
I just have one last question. You said there are three projects that are currently underway. Do you know any more details about those three that the JPA has worked on?
Well, there's, I, I can, I could send you some specific information, but what I would, I would sort of qualify these as being fairly upscale. These are not necessarily just deteriorated buildings that they're looking to renovate. In some cases, it's been fairly recently renovated or fairly newly built structures, because what they're really able to do is buy a fairly high-market value property and then still provide that for this income group, that type of housing.
Thanks.
Okay. So just, this is just a fake scenario. So let's say Skylark Apartments are for sale, and they come and they-
Let's not say that.
Oh, sorry.
Let's say an apartment building in-
An apartment building is for sale. So sorry. No worries. And I kind of knew I shouldn't have said that, so scratch that. And then they come and they purchase these apartment buildings, and people that live there can pay a nice amount of, can pay the rent. What do they do with those that already exist in the building?
Well, as I mentioned, there is, there is a non-displacement requirement. So anybody who's an existing renter continues to, is not forced to leave, and I'm not sure of this, but it may be that even their rent does not go up more than 4% per year. I think, or that may, that may just apply to those that are in fact the, in the unaffordable category. But there is non-displacement for those, and they are not required to leave just because they may exceed the, the income levels. And it's only as units turn over that affordability limits are, are applied.
Okay. And then can they add on to the property to increase our, to help us out with our RENA? Can they, if there's-
That's a possibility.
Okay. All right. Thanks Neil. Sorry, Dan.
If you'll indulge me, Madam Mayor, I want to be on the record that no member of the staff nor any member of the council has any knowledge of any property that Catalyst or CAL-CHA has any interest in.
Well done. Okay, thank you. All right, Larry?
Yeah, there was one paragraph in there that started that the purchase options were for properties in the unincorporated portion of the city. What does that mean?
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again?
It, it said that there was a, in reference to the paragraph about purchase options, and my iPad now is out of power, but-
In the, in the resolution?
No, it was in the staff report, where it states that-
It's a typo.
Oh, it's a typo, okay.
I'm sorry, that's a typo. That was probably her.
It would be, the options apply anywhere within the city.
Within the city.
Yeah. Incorporated, not unincorporated, yeah. Okay, so that, that's fine. So is the realization of any income for the city occur during the sale of the properties? I mean, what, where, where does, where does the financial part of it help the city in terms of building its capabilities maybe to fund other affordable housing projects, or does it? Or is this just a mechanism to allow this JPA to operate within our city limits?
Well, as I, as I understand from the model, it does have the opportunity for the city to receive excess revenues from the project. I think that it's questionable whether initially there's going to be excess revenues, if, depending on levels of maintenance and, you know, costs over time and things and such. So it may not be that the city will necessarily receive revenues aside, and really the, the principal benefit is we're providing a more stable platform of, of housing for residents and workforce persons. I don't, any, any other thoughts on that?
So as I understand the structure of the arrangement, if there are excess revenues as defined in the agreement, then a portion of those are payable to the city to go into city programs to fund affordable housing. I think it's a new, I think the thing is that I, I don't mean to speak for the, for CAL-CHA or those involved. I think it's new enough that it's uncertain whether or not there will actually be excess revenues, and given the way that, that rental markets work, there might not be. But if there are, the agreements are, this, it would be an additional benefit to the city in addition to the preservation of the units and their conversion to moderate income restricted, is that additional revenue would come to the city and be usable to fund other affordable housing programs.
So if that hypothetically occurred, I mean, we already have an Affordable Housing Fund. Is it, I didn't see that it was designated for that.
I believe that, that the expectation would be that the city, whether or not it went into that fund or not, I believe the expectation is the city would use it for that, for those purposes.
Can that be clarified? I mean, like in writing?
I think you would want to do that as a matter of adopting a resolution to that effect. So if you'd like us to bring back a resolution that said any excess revenues generated will be placed in the Affordable Housing Fund, we can bring that to you. It's really outside this action tonight. It's, that's more of a financial direction from you.
Okay, thank you. We'll leave it up to you guys.
All right, now I'm going to open up to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions? Hi.
Hi. I'm Jordan Moss, Catalyst Housing Group, and Larkspur resident. This is on?
It's on.
Okay. We just had our third baby a couple of days ago. I'm not sure if I'm actually here or actually asleep.
We get that.
Didn't know if you could hear me. I just wanted to clarify one thing for sure. When we talk about excess revenues that you asked about, normally I think in affordable housing structures, people are thinking of that as the excess cash flow during ownership. Excess revenues, as is divine, defined in our documents here, is not only the cash flow during the hold, but it's all of the embedded equity that builds up in the asset over time. And so this structure, if you think about 30 years of appreciation of real estate in California and sort of what we expect to see over that period of time, and full amortization of the bonds over that period of time, as the, all of the cash flows are used to redeem debt, we believe that there's going to be significant equity built up, and all of that will ultimately be deemed to be excess revenue that will be granted to the underlying jurisdiction. So we think there's a very likely case that there's significant economics built into this for the underlying jurisdiction.
Great. Thanks for clarifying that, Jordan.
You bet. Happy to address any other-
Any questions for Jordan?
No.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Good idea. All right, so council, we brought it back to the council. We have a resolution 79, yeah, 719. Any, what do you want?
I'll move that we follow the staff recommendation.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposes? I see none. It passes. That's great.
Thanks for that, Neil. It was very-
That's really, yeah, good luck.
We're excited.
Yeah, you should be. We need that affordable housing for sure. So 9.1. I really wanted just to sneak out. I didn't want to really, I didn't even let my friends know that I'm actually retiring. Well, they, they know, but they didn't know when. So I really love to see the faces out there, and I appreciate you staying here for the council meeting for the 9.1. I'm so honored to be the mayor, to be part of this council for the last eight years. I can't believe it's been eight years. So I would like to, you know, you can't sit here and say aye. It's not an aye job, it's a we job. My council members and I, we've worked hard and we worked well together, and I'm actually going to extremely miss working with them. And so a friend of mine asked, what did you get done in those eight years? And I just rambled on, and I'm not going to do that tonight, I promise, but I do have five points that I'm very proud about and that we, we are proud about. We've been fiscally prudent. We've dealt with the pension and the OPAD. We've done it well. Thank you, Vice Mayor Larry Chu. And our general reserve, it's at a very nice amount at the moment. So I think we as a council, we really watched it, and we've taken good care of, of Larkspur financially. Shared Services, very proud of the Central Marin Police Authority, and now we have the Central Marin Fire Authority. So Shared Services is something that I hope the council continues investigating, and we have our local cities, we all, you know, can work together, and there's so many other consolidations that we can, we can pursue. So I hope that is continued as a top priority to save money, to continue saving money. Passing Measure B, thank you, residents. We've done, we, we needed that money, and we are paving our streets. It takes time, but we're going to get there in those five years. And how exciting, even like Larry Chu, our vice mayor, mentioned, we got good marks on, on our repavement with the PCI report. So that was really great to see in just one year. So four more years to go, I think we'll, we'll do well. Smart Train is coming. How exciting is that? So I wish I was here to cut that ribbon. I'm going to miss that. And then the Bonner Bridge, we did a lot of infrastructure this year. Bonner Bridge, the storm drains, we've got the ADA-compliant sidewalks. Anyway, it's, it's been nonstop with the, with the infrastructure, so I'm really proud of that. So council members, we did it, and we've done a great job, and what an incredible team we have here. So again, I'm really proud and admire every one of you. So thanks for working so well with me. Appreciate it. City Manager.
What am I going to have to find tissues for?
No, no. I was so green when I, hang on.
All right, well-
I have never been to a council, to a council meeting when I applied for this position. I applied because I love the City of Larkspur. And I was quite green, and I really appreciate our city manager, along with his staff. You guys are incredible. Fire Chief Scott Schertz, Police Chief Mike Norton, I don't want to forget anyone, so I'm reading. Public Works Director Julian Skinner, wow. Planning and Building Director Neil Toff, great job. Finance Director Kathy Orb, Recreation Director, such sweetie, Dick Whitley, and our new clerk, Allison, welcome to the team. And our city attorney, Sky Woodrough, you always kept me under control. I appreciate that, like tonight. We also want to thank all the volunteers that make Larkspur so special. All the boards, the commissions, and the foundation, the Larkspur Library Community Center, Friends of the Library. It's just been incredible. And Katie Rice, thanks for doing a great job and being our supervisor. So appreciate all you do. And look, you've been in meetings all day and here you are. So sweet. So, you know, as a team, we make this city so special, and it's known for the gem of California. And thank you, because it's all the hard work that we put into it to make it such a sweet little city. So I'm just so proud to be a resident and to be part of the council, and I will always enjoy, I will always be proud to say, wow, I was on the council. So thank you very much. Thank you. I'll stand up. Larry Chu, sorry.
Well, as the vice mayor, I'm going to co-opt this meeting, or this part of the meeting. You know, Anne and I, I guess, share what I call a bond, an electoral bond in a sense that we're in the same class.
Yes, we are.
Eight years ago, you know, we were both up for election at the same time, and we had a mutual friend of ours, you know, host one of these coffees for us. You know, I've known of Anne going back to when she helped start the Mother's Club, but not being a mom, and I'd go to some of the events, but, you know, I always recognized her to be somebody who had a lot of enthusiasm, but, and, and the way she interacted with people was just really amazing. And the first time we had one of these coffees, it, it was like she would just draw people to her. You know, they, they always say, well, what is a definition of leadership? Well, one is, if you look over your shoulder behind you, you better hope that there's people behind you. Well, she, she can draw people in, and it, it's just amazing. I could see then that if she, when, if and when she became mayor, that it would just change the whole dynamics of, of our council in a way that it, it would bring the community together on things that we had to do, things at that time which were somewhat divisive issues, and she, she accomplished that for us. And, you know, not just when she's mayor, but also bringing the council together on things where, you know, it's just going in- You know, people seldom see things like that, but it really made a difference for this council and for our community in terms of the way you just brought everybody together and made this all a better place and made it more enjoyable for us to work with.
Thank you, Larry. And Larry's going to be the new mayor, Larry's going to be the mayor for the next month.
Yeah.
Fun, he so deserves it.
So what I would like to start with, there are several parts to this, is a proclamation from the Larkspur City Council recognizing your retirement and your term of service. So whereas, I'm going to read this, "Whereas Ann Morrison has dutifully served as the residents of the city of Larkspur for eight years, having first been elected to the Larkspur City Council on November 8, 2011, and in light of her stellar performance nominated and appointed to another term in 2015. Ann served twice as mayor, city of Larkspur, 2014 and this year, 2019, leading semi-monthly meetings with distinction through big issues and small. Ann's infectiously positive attitude about Marin life and Larkspur in particular improved the disposition of attendees of meetings in which she participated, leading to better outcomes and greater consensus. Ann's commitment to improving people's lives led her to invest a considerable amount of time and energy to committees and organizations that touch vulnerable populations such as the Safe Roots to School Working Group, Community Development Block Grant Priority Setting Committee, and several countywide committees combating homelessness. Ann worked closely with the Chamber of Commerce to enhance Larkspur's economic environment, in particular advocating for Larkspur's small business owners in the city's older corridors such as North Magnolia Business District. Ann invested much of her time towards Larkspur's pursuit of a new library, overseeing several key planning committees, and establishing critical partnerships in the community. Ann was a strong proponent for public safety, serving many years on the Central Marin Police Authority Council, and joining her fellow council members in strongly supporting this formation, the Central Marin Fire Authority. Ann has long been an ambassador of goodwill about Larkspur wherever she goes, a role in which the council expects her to continue to serve in her future travels near and far. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Larry Chu, Vice Mayor of the city of Larkspur, express the gratitude of the city council to Ann Morrison for her service and leadership to the city of Larkspur. And of course, there are the formal in-witness thereof and all that other stuff.
Of course, of course. Wow. Wow, 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 wow. Oh, it's beautiful. You know what? Do you think I can wear that as a medallion? Do you think I can walk around town like this? Thank you, Larry Chu.
Allison's going to have to hold on to it. I'm fitting your carry-on bag.
I'm so honored, thank you. It's just beautiful.
But wait, there's more.
Oh. Wow, it's so beautiful. Oh, this is so funny.
Hopefully this, you know, since you're traveling starting Saturday.
Yeah.
We wanted you to be able to at least take a couple things with you.
Yeah.
At least one anyway, because there are weight limits when you fly internationally. So this says Marin County, a happy place.
Oh, I love it. Thank you. That is so sweet. Thank you, everybody. Wow, it is a happy place.
All right.
More?
But wait, there's more.
Gee, I'm not leaving.
Without wanting to, you know, all the incoming mayors get a gavel, and it's a really nice gesture, and I've saved all of mine and keep, you know, collection of three of them, which I've been given by the volunteer firefighters for Larkspur. But what we'd like, the council and staff would like to present you with is a crystal gavel with the engravement that says, "Ann Morrison, thank you for your service, Larkspur City Council, 2011 to 2019."
Wow. Wow. Wow, I'm so overwhelmed. Oh, it's beautiful. You guys have to see it out there.
Wow. I am so honored. Did we apply that to so well? Well done, Larry.
That's great.
Wow, thank you. Wow. Don't want to hit that too hard.
All right. Can we?
So, oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Larry.
So at this point, what I'd like to do is first invite my colleagues here at the council to see if there's anything that, you know, they would like to say to Ann. We just had a really great dinner the other night with the five of us, and City Manager Dan Swartz and Sky Woodruff, our city attorney, and, you know, it was just a good way to recount, you know, all the good things and, you know, the things that we've kind of accomplished as a team over the course of the last eight years.
Well, I'd like to say something.
Thank you.
I remember not knowing you, and you called me in 2013 to encourage me to run for office.
I did, I need another woman.
And, yeah, and it wasn't just because she needed another female associate with her, but I think we had, you had heard that I was also engaged in things in the city, and engaged in things with the school and with the family, and I think you gave me some really good advice that I have seen you do over the years, because I, obviously, like everyone does, ask how much time and effort this takes, and knowing that you're a family person, and so am I, and we travel a lot together, and you work hard, and so do I, that it was, you exemplified that ability to do that work-life balance on this extreme amount of volunteering that this role does take, but you exemplified that, and I think that that is a very good role modeling for other women and men who are interested in public service. That public service can be done, and you can continue to have a fulfilling family life and work life and community life. And I think you, I've noticed how that has evolved over the last eight years, and I think you exemplify how, how much we care in this community to encourage people to participate, recognizing that they need the help from staff, and they need the help from their neighbors and their communities so they can fully engage, because this is a community that supports each other, and I see that, and I think you're launching into the next fabulous phase of life, so.
I see that.
Thank you. And I, and I just, I was thinking about it today, because eight years ago, I don't think you would have felt that as confident in reflecting your public speaking skills and things and in engaging in this process, and I know you've said that. Today, at that ribbon cutting, you were like over the top in your ability to, you know, to really engage with the group that was there, to really recognize and articulate what Larkspur means to that community, and it shows.
Great. Thank you, Catherine. Very kind words.
I agree with everything that's been said.
That's all you need to say.
But I have more. I have learned a lot working with you about myself, and it's very valuable to me. You exhibit many qualities that I would like to see more of in myself. We all were, have worked hard at staying engaged, working with our staff, our great staff that you named, you didn't name everybody, but I'll include everybody in my reference. Staying engaged on increasingly more complicated projects, and keeping the council focused on understanding about our decisions, I think that's, that's a very, very valuable thing. And hanging in there while we get there. We're always trying to improve our communication skills, and I think you have advanced the council's work in that area. But moreover, you've really set a great example for me, and I think for others, you're always inviting the next generation to watch and to learn, and your sincere enthusiasm in that regard really has affected me. As well as your loyalty to the city, and your consistent example of serving with great integrity, I think that's very important. The feeling of empowerment you give everybody that walks in the room, I think, is something that, I mean, I really have watched, and I want to be able to do what you can do in that regard, which sums up that you have great charisma. And I think, I think that is something that this council has benefited greatly from.
Thank you.
Altogether, I think those are great leadership qualities. So I just want you to know, I value working with you greatly, and you've done a great service to the city.
Great. Oh, I appreciate all the words. Thank you. I'm just sleeping here with my head held so high. I don't want to pop it. All right, are we, thank you very much.
Well, I think we'll let staff have, I know there are people in the audience, is there anybody who would like to address the council or?
Yeah, Liza, you want to address the council?
Or Ann?
As a mayor, for the service, as a longtime Larkspur resident, I just want to thank you.
Nice app living. That was a.
She just walked in her green house.
Hello, Liza Matthews.
Mayor Morrison, it's nice to say that one last time. I had not expected to be here this long, this evening, but it was another example of the way that you, as has been expressed by your colleagues, hold a room and all the people in it with such respect, and treat the subject matter with such integrity and thoroughness, and just, it's, it is a quality that I think only people are frankly born with, we can try to work at it, but there is, you have this innate way of really connecting with folks and respecting them, doesn't matter who they are, where they're coming from, what we're talking about, and it brings out the best in everyone, content-wise and behavior-wise, I'm sure. I have a, I have a, did I, Katie Rice, Marin County Board of Supervisors.
Oh, we know who you are.
Well, just in case. And I've worked with Ann quite a bit over the years, we're sort of the same class as well, this is my eighth year serving as supervisor, and it has been a pleasure every single day and in every single way that we do interact. And it was mentioned that along with the great work that Ann has done for the city in her capacity on this council and on the many committees you serve on, many of those roles have been on county committees or commissions. One that was not mentioned was the Women's Commission on which you joined, I can't remember now how many years ago.
Six.
Six years ago, and your contributions there and your leadership there are going, are a legacy that are going to continue to reverberate on and on, and I think you know what I'm talking about. Ann was a great leader on the Homelessness Planning Steering Committee, and you work here. Just recognizing that homelessness is a countywide issue, just really remarkable. So your, the gifts that you gave to your city, you also gave so many gifts to the county at large, and we adopted a resolution recognizing you for your service upon your retirement. I'm not going to read it all, but I do want to read just actually one paragraph that I think says again, and maybe some different, in a different way with some different words, what's been communicated by your, by your colleagues here, and I want to echo, and they're included in this resolution. It says, "Whereas throughout her service on the council, Ann has brought her own unique style and an unwavering passion, grace, and commitment to the greater good, making Larkspur and all of broader Marin a stronger, more compassionate, and cohesive community." And for that, we will thank you always. So a resolution from you from our board, not quite as fancy as the one you have.
That's okay, I will make it fancy.
You can roll this up and take it with you, and just wishing you well on your, on your next adventures, and we will be thinking about you, and we know you'll be thinking about us as well.
Keep in touch, absolutely. Thank you, Katie. Thanks for hanging. Very nice of you.
Okay.
And I hope Chris was watching. I thought her didn't go to bed.
No. God, no. Thank you so much. Appreciate all of you, too. Wow, they're beautiful. I'm just so overwhelmed right now. Hi, Joan. Wow.
Hi, Joan, good evening.
As a, as a, an old timer, and on behalf, Joan Lundstrom, former city councilman, longtime resident, former mayor, a couple times, on behalf of the Larkspur Community Foundation, our board really thanks you for your service, and bringing everyone together gracefully and with enthusiasm, and also the, personally, I think the statements that you have made in your past eight years, bringing this council together, I think, leadership and the strong sense of community and the fine staff that we have. And one, one last comment, I'm very envious of getting a crystal where the firemen step up. And also, I, I, in my serving on the city council, I was first elected when I was 38 years old, and I was elected for two terms, then I went off the council, and I came back later, older.
I didn't know that.
So you can always come back.
Oh, and Joan, I have to thank you, when I first became on the, when I first got on the council, you gave me on how to conduct yourself on the dais, and I hope you pass that on to the two new appointed council members. It was very helpful. And I know you, I know you know what I'm speaking about.
And it actually was an adopted resolution.
Wow.
That Dan Hillmer said, "Let's put, let's put down what we've been doing, what we've been doing right."
Yeah.
Both treating each other and debates and the citizens and dealing with staff and everything.
Yeah, very wise advice on that piece of paper.
See, you can always come back.
Thank you.
I always.
Best wishes to you.
To be fair, I always refer to them as Joan's operating principles.
Thank you. Thank you, Joan. All right.
Kate, does anyone else in the audience like to say their farewells to Ann?
Oh, Cindy. I was supposed to just sneak out of here.
Sneak in anywhere. I'll be brief. Cindy Winter, I agree with each and every laudatory word that so many people have said, but I'm very curious about something. What does the next chapter in your life hold? I'm told that it involves some travels, and could you tell us a little bit about those? I'd like to imagine you flitting around the world.
Oh, thank you, thank you. My husband, Chris, and I, we put our house up for rent, and we are going to go travel the world. So we're going to go, we leave this Saturday, and we're going to go live in Australia for three to four months. We are expats, so our youngest son, I've got four children, our youngest son was born there, so he now lives there, so we're going to go to Australia, and then Italy and Croatia, and we're going to see, we're just going to see where the road takes us, just for one year. So that's what we're going to do. So thank you for asking. Phase two of our life. Well, there's, there's many phases, but, okay.
On behalf of the staff, one comment if I might.
I did.
If I may.
Hello, Dr. Meredith.
Hi, Larry Meredith, I just want to thank Ann, I mean, it's so wonderful having actually met you and experiencing your unbridled enthusiasm for bringing, and compassion and leadership for older adults, and ensuring that Larkspur is sensitive to the needs that they present and as we all age. But, but the council, the way you all have come together with staff as a team is really quite inspiring and remarkable, and sets a model of excellence for councils across the country. So I really feel privileged to have experienced a small part of this. Thank you, Ann.
Thank you. And Larry, congratulations on the resolution from the, from the supervisors. That's really exciting for Twin Cities Marin Villages.
Again, it takes a village.
Yes, it does. Thank you. Thanks, Larry, for the nice words. Hi, Dan.
I just want to say on behalf of the staff, you know, we are very fortunate, and I don't think the council even knows. think the council even knows how much we treasure the volume of support that this council gives to us. You have a very veteran staff, which I feel very fortunate about, and we have seen a lot of different elected officials do a lot of different things all during the years and we've always treasured the support from this council. But I don't think I've ever had a council member or any other elected official who has made the effort you have made to share with me and the whole staff the positive things that the community's saying. Because, you know, we're in the business of dealing with the negative things people say, and so we always have to remind ourselves, there are people out there that don't tell us we're doing a good job. And I want to thank you on behalf of the staff for the volume, the many, many times you've made a point of sharing with us the positive things you're hearing out in the community.
And it was very sincere, too. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, in closing here, just like to wish you happy and safe travels and happy retirement. We will be following you on Facebook, so make sure you post things and, you know, just have fun.
Thank you.
And when you come back, we want to get, we want to get in touch with you again.
Absolutely. You can't get rid of me.
Yeah, we got to hear what you did.
Thank you.
So, at this point, I would like to turn our regular programming back over to the mayor so that she can close her last meeting.
All right. Well, Vice Mayor and Larry Chu, thank you, and I'm so excited for you to be the mayor next month. So excited for you. You so deserve it. And with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and thank you so much for the kind words and the gifts and just, I am, I'm leaving here with my heart completely full. Thank you.